Parish. The allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you leave some prayer, please?
Yes. Father in heaven, we thank you for this wonderful time that you allowed us to come together. Bobby, wanna ask for your grace, God in Kansas City, we wanna ask for your grace in America. We wanna ask for your grace here in the San Luis Valley and here in Montevista. We ask God that your will will be done, that your force will rise up against the evil in all these places. And take a stand in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray in that.
Amen. You need a roll call, please?
Counselor Howard?
There.
Counselor Lawrence?
Here.
Counselor Watson?
Here.
Mayor Proton Sibola?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
For instance, please.
Modifications to the agenda?
I guess there is one notification on the agenda, we would like to remove the N one, N two from staff reports.
Make a motion to uh remove N two from staff reports.
Been moved and seconded to remove N two from the staff reports, is there any discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yeah.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Sibola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda, removing N two from the staff report.
Approval of consent agenda from minutes regular meeting from February first twenty twenty four and review approval of accounts payable.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes regular meeting from February first twenty twenty four and review and approval of accounts payable, is there any discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Sibola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Proclamation, so we'll move to citizen comments and special presentations. Citizen comments, council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments three minutes and council will not take action at this meeting. Ms. Margaret, do you have something?
I'd just wanted to say hello for inviting councils. Gigi, everybody, hi, I'm happy, I'm gonna try to make it at every meeting again. I tell it's been rough, but I'm happy to be here and I guess the the thing at Sky High last week was a huge success. Everybody I talked to was just thoroughly impressed with the speakers and what was out there and I couldn't go, but next year I'm gonna go, so yay, we're doing good, the town looks good. And I'm just thanking God, I live in Montevista, thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Well said.
Are you, wanna do a citizen comment?
No.
Okay.
He's giving a staff report.
He's doing the style, okay, it's not your turn yet, man.
He's gonna wreck it.
All right, we'll go on to scheduled appearances. Order to be included in this portion of the agenda, you have to file the appropriate paperwork with city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Brad Harmon, discussion of street improvements on your list, be sure and sign that paper up there, Brad. And state your full name, please.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Brad Harmon, I live on the corner of Alameda. Today I'm here to talk to you about kids' safety. I have Marsh Park across from my house. Um includes basketball courts and I don't know if you wanna call it pickleball or tennis courts or whatever, but I do know that there has been inquiries in for pickleball on that court. Um but today I am coming to ask for signs around the park, including speed limit signs stating twenty miles an hour. The reason I put it there is, I mean, almost a school area type of thing. Slow areas for schools, I feel it should be the same for parks. Um there are no signs whatsoever for stating that there's kids playing around there, so it's my kids along with the neighborhoods are always crossing the streets back and forth. And there are cars, I get cars from Sonic, day in and day out, cruising up and down. They pretty much act like those two roads almost as a short little drag strip, I mean, we're pedal to the metal from once to the next. Um now the north ends, uh because the park is split at Darwin. But the north end of the park has no power, therefore it has no lighting on the streets or the park. So therefore, me looking out to the street and across pitch black. There's times that I can barely see my neighbors' houses. Um and that that aspect just helps improve, like I said, for kids' safety. Um now one thing that's has been, I don't know if suggested or not, but in turn taking Alameda and Ulysses and changing them to a one race street. Um the only reason I say that is the housing is on the right side of the road, no matter or let's say you go north on Alameda, housing's on the east side. Go down south, down Ulysses, everything's on the west side, and then you have the park in between. To me, it just makes sense to have those as a one way. Whether you guys agree on that, it's up to you and everything like that. Um now, aside from the park, the one thing that I have a big safety problem with and that happened this summer was, so behind my house, I have um how they, what they call the canal, but there is a canal that runs behind my house, it has a head gate. There were kids playing in that ditch in the head gate. That was one thing that I was told as a kid, you never go towards those head gates or anything there. Now, my wife did call the police department and she was told they are okay to play in it. Now later on, I'm not sure of timeframe, but an officer did show up and do something, but I'm not exactly hundred percent sure. But the way I see it, no matter what, one of those, and I think these kids were in their teams. Parents did okay them to play in the ditch. But the one thing you never know, if you get sucked into that culvert, what's gonna hang you up? That rushing water will kill you in an instant. And I do not need to see a kid being pulled out of that culvert because per dispatch, it was okay for them to play there. That's a real hard thing for me to say. Now, on that note, I do understand that the city may not have anything to be able to do with the ditch. But I do feel you could go to the ditch company in being that it is in city limits, come to an agreement to have something resolved. Um yeah, I guess that's it on that point. Um now, I don't this next one is gonna come down to police presence. Um I do not know the number of times or how often they patrol around my area. Um the reason I say that, and it'd be one of those of figuring out if they've had reports. But like when it snows, I've got donuts in the grass. There's people spinning donuts in the park. And driving through the park, um I there, there's a lot of that could be fixed with a cruise through and this and that, um. But uh uh and on the PD side of things, this weekend, I was, let's say, surprised to see a sting operation go down about a block from my house. They stayed there, I'm glad they called him off, didn't know, my wife has always had problems with the house, no matter what. It was nice to see that unmarked vehicles in the sheriff's department taking care of whoever was there. And there's countless families around that house. So how long it took for them to get to that conclusion, I don't know. But what I do know, and I can't state the officer, but I do know that there is an officer that more or less lives the block behind me. So what he does in his own neighborhood to let things go, I don't know. But to me, that should have been one of those aspects of, okay, there's a cop that lives in this neighborhood, maybe we should do something different or have more patrol or even him running through before he gets off or after he gets off to the shit, I don't know if he does it or not. It's my biggest concern is, like I said, my kids and the kids that are around me. Now, between me and the house that sits on the corner of Alameda and Ulysses or um Darwin, I do have old folks. So between the two corners, it's two young families and then elderly people. So i- it's just, like I said, the big point is kids' safety. So that's all I have, thank you.
Rob, would you like to, as far as the signs go, because we have this kind of what the process is?
I can address some of that, this. The speed limit, um that's something we need to address. Here's a model traffic code, and the chief and I would have to get together. In order to change a speed limit, the city is set um by ordinance. Unless otherwise noted, it's twenty five on each end of town. So thirty miles an hour is prima facie, that's the state regulation for what a residential street should be.
Right.
Anything that to lower it from there, we have to do a series of things, all of our justification comes from the model traffic code. So we have to meet a certain amount of warrants in order to justify moving the speed. The school zone is the exception.
Right.
They do not include parks under that same exemption, okay? So we would have to actually go out and look at it, do some traffic counts and things of that nature. Um as far as any signs that say kids that play, those are not supported by the MUTCD, that's the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Licenses. We, as a government agency, are not allowed to put any signage out into the right of way that does not or is not supported by the agency.
Okay, so you can't even put the little running kid sign in the park?
Not in a park, the running kid is for the school zone. So I'm sorry about that, those are the rules.
Then I just need this, there's we need to do to get more kids' safety there.
You can put anything that you want in your yard?
Oh, we have.
So.
But it, but it doesn't affect anybody.
And and we can talk to the chief about um seeing what we can do to make um making the streets one way, my only concern on that is exactly what you said later in your presentation about, there's always been people that drive through the parks. My wife and I, we used to live at the corner of Ulysses. They know how, um and we would see that every time and we'd go. Um I can check with Excel, there is a street light at the corner of um Alameda and Darwin, and then there's another one on Alameda and Huxley.
Yes.
Those are only designed to light up the intersection.
It hasn't even faced the intersection.
Yeah, well, it's, it's out, the cast is that way, um those are Excel lights. Um I can work with Gigi to see if she wants us to try to get something a little closer to the playground areas. But that, that could happen, um so we can look at that, um we did put power on the south side. We have some power.
Right, for, yeah, but there's absolutely nothing on the north end.
No, no, there's not.
And there's even lighting there and the guys fell off for playing streets.
Right, so um let me look at the north end and see what we can come up with. Uh but lighting is something we could do to try to aid some of the security for the kids to get a little more versatile. Um so I will look into that, see what they can come up with. And we might be able to ha- after they go through the chain, um we might be able to ask Excel to put in a security light there. And try to address that through that.
Any questions?
Oh, I know that, oh, I was just gonna say, I know that down on, I think it's uh North Henderson. That's where the register is, I call that a town, or goes up north, um there's um like six, seven signs, maybe that
Yeah, that's behind my house.
Yeah.
That's okay, then
And that's what I'm just saying.
And one south.
Yeah, I'm just saying that there's just a whole bunch of signage that the residents themselves.
And so we, we put them up.
You know?
We, we put them up and nobody, I mean, I've been talking outside my house and people have almost hit my wife. Because they're flying up to that stop sign, just so they can wait for it again.
I wish some of the residents had more of a camera presence, so that, you know, when people do certain things like this, we have a camera.
I'd like to put cameras on my house, but I've got an Adobe app.
Yeah, no, it, it, it'd be nice to know which in that area have cameras, so that when someone sees something, we know, like the officers know where they can go to maybe get shortage of who did that and go after them, because the only way you stop it is you start busting people for doing. Um now, I agree, I completely agree with everything that you want, it's a matter of what we can legally do.
Right, and then that's, that was my whole point of bringing the different options up and
Yeah.
maybe seeing if we can't do
No, I totally see where you're coming from on this and stuff, it's just now we just have to find a, a legal means to move forward with it.
I understand that.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes.
Um have you noticed kind of a, a pattern as far as the timing of when you think it's a higher rate of speed? So is it after school hours or?
And on that aspect, I'm not, I can't tell you.
Cause we almost do need a sort of pattern in this and sort of catch.
Yeah, um so I leave, I, I'm gonna work at seven or eight o'clock in the morning, I leave my house at seven thirty and I'm not back home until after five thirty. And then when, like on Tuesday and Thursdays in this time of year, I pretty much shove food in my face and take a quick shower and go to wrestling practice. So I'm not at home. That, that's why I pointed out with the police department presence. I'm not hundred percent sure on that because I'm not at home on a regular basis during the week. But yeah, pretty much feeding time, your lunch hours and everything like that, there's people going up and down and they'll cut across and from the one south and come on that dirt road, I've actually had a Chrysler three hundred drift around that corner through the bridge and everything like that, and that's just one of those there, it's like, okay, how can I get that and do that, go from there? But it's, like I said, I, I can't control everything when I'm not there. And being this past year that I have changed jobs, I do have a little bit more free time to notice more of what's going around that maybe I hadn't noticed before because I wasn't home near as often as I am now. So that it's just things that I've seen in this past year and the other things like with the cars driving through the park and this and that and the other. That's where it's like, okay. Then this summer, like I said, with having six to ten kids at my house from neighbors, you, those kids are always crossing the streets. And that's where my problem lies.
Hey, Rob?
Yes.
A quick question for you, uh where, what's uh any rules or guidelines on the speed bump?
Uh there is no guideline on the speed bump.
I mean, is that something that could be added or, and, and cost effectively, I mean, not like?
It can, but I'm not a huge fan.
I'm not a fan of them either.
Um with our pavement structures and stuff. Um what, what winds up happening a lot with speed bumps and especially with our asphalt, our asphalt is only three inches thick. So what's gonna happen is the cars go over, especially those that choose not to slow down.
Start busting it in.
You're gonna start seeing pop.
The other thing is
So one thing that we can do though is I can ask the chief to get from the state patrol one of the traffic counters. Because it, it will tell you the size of the vehicle that went over it, the speed that they're going, the time of day it went.
Can reach out to Patrick at the county and use it, that's what she's used in the past.
Yeah, and as far as like people driving through the park, is there a way to just to line that park on the edge of the road with a slight dirt burn or something, because a lot of these cars cannot go over much.
Well, I mean, see, that's the other thing. There, there's people that
There's just something that prevents them from even wanting to damage their car.
When they park on the park site, oh, actually parked in the park.
Will it?
Yes. Because of how narrow the roads are, that's why I brought up
Yeah, and these are just more questions on my part as far as making sense out of this.
Yeah.
Were you, on the one way, were you thinking like Alameda going north and then?
Yes, the, the, the only reason I said that was thinking that is because plows, you, you like to go in the park.
Right.
You like to plow that snow into the park. Mailboxes are right there to begin with anyway, so to change it for the mail waiting and everything like that, I don't want to screw her up.
Well, we got, we gotta really consider Sonic there too, because a lot of that traffic exits out on that side. And if it's a one way, how many people are gonna defy that just to get out real quick?
Well, a lot of times on the one ways, that's why I said the park, since it is driven in a regular basis, um and that's usually earlier in March when people do that, um from living there. They would have a tendency, because you have to remember, if you come up and you happen to live on um Ulysses, you gotta either go up to Huxley
Yeah.
or Darwin to swing around and come down, and I know it's not a huge inconvenience, but folks are have, they're creatures of habit, so they'll either drive the wrong way on a one way
Yeah.
or they'll wind up cutting through the
That's almost one you have to get a large portion of the people in that neighborhood to sign off on, so they don't think about it.
Right.
Maybe um if this would be a benefit, um let me get with the chief and see if we can go out and take a look at it and come up with some ideas, and give a presentation back to you. Is that, is that something?
Sound good, man.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Brad.
Hey, we will move on to resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero seven budget amendment for the twenty twenty three budget for Kids Connection. Nita?
Um, Mayor? Um I haven't been up here for quite a while, so hi. I'm still working on uh year-end entries and getting really close to finishing up the year-end, the auditor um came and met with Gigi and I and she, they wanna get the audit done as soon as possible before I leave. Um and I said, but I didn't wanna do this. But um the, the good, one of the good points is um this is when we did the budget amendments at the, at mid-year, um this is the only one that um everything else fell within our budget. Um but um Kids Connection, the expenses um came in more than what we budgeted and I'll get in trouble if I let that go that way. And it came in that way because of the air conditioning and the added repairs we had to do to the roof and so um on the um to offset it, we were able to increase the amount of ARPA funds that we used to help pay for that. So that's what my budget resolution basically is, um to reflect the increase in the federal grant for the ARPA fund and then um mainly the increase in the um capital outlay. And then I just um added a you know, um a little bit more for food service so that it's not um so much over, but so. I'll read it. A resolution approving an amended budget and appropriations of funds for the calendar year twenty twenty three to authorize expenditures for the Kids Connection Fund, whereas the city council of the city of Montevista recognizes the importance of providing budget amendments to accurately state the unaudited financial position of the city year to date, and whereas these budget amendments provide assistance in the efficient administration of the city's Kids Connection Fund. And whereas the city council by passage of this resolution acknowledges the city is providing financial controls regarding expenditures. And whereas the city will appropriate Kids Connection additional grant and member dues revenue received to fund additional operating and capital outlay expenses. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Montevista, Colorado, that the twenty twenty three Kids Connection Fund budget and appropriations are hereby amended as follows. Um I have federal grants, um currently budgeted at fifty thousand, I would like to increase it fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy nine for a total of sixty four thousand five hundred and seventy nine. Um member dues, the revenue is currently budgeted at two thousand eight hundred and eighty three. I would like to increase it to one thousand, um an increase of one thousand seven hundred and ninety one to a total of four thousand six hundred and seventy four. Then um in the expenditure side, the food service program was currently budgeted at eleven thousand. I would like an increase of one thousand nine hundred and twenty nine to increase that total budget to twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty nine. And the capital outlay um for the building was budgeted at eighty one thousand seven hundred and seventy five. And increase it to um fourteen thousand four hundred and forty one, which would bring that total to ninety six thousand two hundred and sixteen. I would like your approval for this resolution, you have any questions about it?
The member dues what? What is number dues? Yeah.
She has very few, um she has a few parents that actually pay, that pay for their services and um she had a little bit more revenue this year than um she has had in the past. So that just reflected that revenue there.
Is that a voluntary thing on those parents' part, or is that just because they make a higher income or something?
Mm-hmm, because they fall outside of the um income guidelines.
I think if I recall correctly, the income guidelines are seventy five thousand per household. And we, this last year was charging five dollars per child per week. And we did raise that, you guys approved that in the fee scheduling, we raised it to ten dollars per child per week.
I make a whole resolution in twenty twenty four dash seven oh seven budget amendment for the twenty twenty three budget for Kids Connection. Secondly. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution two zero two four dash zero seven budget amendment for the twenty twenty three budget for Kids Connection, is there any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Sibola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash oh seven budget amendment for the twenty twenty three budget for Kids Connection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, looks like we are moving to staff proposals, reports and actions. Recreation. All right, man.
I'll try not to. Good evening, councilman. I'm Trevor Lee Ariano. I'll be filling in for uh rec uh Durban for recreation. Um, I'd like to start by saying these are the highest numbers we've been seeing for our first um little regular season basketball. We have eighty six kids in total. Um, yeah, so eighty eight teams. Um, out of those eight teams, I believe four of them placed, one of them got championship, the other one got third place. Fourth play, fourth place, and then the other one third place again. Um, the other things we're looking at um is soccer camps. And we're currently taking registration for that right now. It's gonna be helped helped out with the Adam State Soccer Team. Uh, we're also taking registration for volleyball camps um that will be hosted at Sky High on February twenty third. Um, currently have forty girls for that, so that's pretty good stuff. And then we're also taking Zumba classes every Tuesday at five thirty at Sky High, along with yoga classes on Friday at noon at Sky High. And then we'll we will be hosting a Hunter Education Conclusion Class on March thirtieth at eight AM from two thirty at Sky High as well. And that's it. Any question?
That's the conclusion one?
Yes.
So is there like one that they should talk to before that or something like that?
I'm not too sure.
DOW is in charge of that, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you get one of your.
I just have a kid that needs one.
Did we register Trevor on our city recreation website?
I believe they come in and register into here.
Okay, so do you can you get? Councilman Watson a an application form they can fill out? He could take with him?
Do not have one.
Okay.
That's all right. Come down and check into it.
All right, perfect.
We'll find one and any email it to you.
Thanks. And then as for Sky High, we're putting the floors back up, so that's getting into use. Um, with volleyball volleyball camps, soccer camps, hopefully if. The if the weather if the weather is bad, we'll be holding it at Sky High and then. I'm not sure on our adult league, we're either gonna host it there at Sky High or at the middle school. So, but we got everything we need to go there with nets, basketball hoops. The manpower, so should be good with that.
Good.
Any questions?
Quick comment before you step away, be sure to wave your to your dad at the camera.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you, Trevor.
City Attorney.
I remember municipal council, thank you. First of all, uh, there there was no court in between our sessions, so we got court next week the way things fell in, so there's. Really nothing to report on municipal court at this time. Been obtaining some things on uh incentives from CML. That I've sent on to Gigi of what other municipalities are doing, uh examples and so forth. Um, and I hope that's uh helpful. Um, came in and met the the folks from Cobblestone the other day, very nice people uh. And some of the investors were here. In the area of land use. We've got, uh, I think DJ is operating around some constructions on the uh. The grant when that's gotta be due uh. And when you're doing land use code, it's it's uh. Real tedious work, cause you've got to look at a lot of things of what you're doing, what the. If legal implications of those are um. I've volunteered to uh have meetings with him. Correctly, uh, in every week at the nine thirty. You know, or ten thirty in the morning and uh also. The evenings on the first and third Mondays for planning commission uh. Analysis on all this, it's uh that can be worked into the schedule. Um, it's kinda like that uh saying. Smoky and abandoned, we got a long way to go and a short time to get there. Well, uh, there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. Um, and some of the things we're looking at there is uh. The the way that um. The districts have been suggested. For example, in the highway oriented commercial uses uh. This is uh if. The the district CH district presently provides for highway oriented commercial uses, both local and transient. Automotive and related needs, which is fairly clear because that would implicate the convenience stores. Restaurants, auto parts stores, uh sale stores, et cetera, fitting into that category. Uh, the mixed use, uh, I had some questions about that was gonna end up. Replacing that, uh states that tended to accommodate small compact centers made up of neighborhood. Oriented commercial and institutional uses surrounded by residential areas. I'm not quite sure. How that plays out or what that exactly means. Uh, so what that, what you end up doing when you if that's gonna. Replace that use is having to go to uh. Some very detailed uh. Classifications in your use chart of what actually is a lot going to be allowed right there to clear that up. So that's in the CB district, for example. Uh, is um according to our code now comprised of areas to provide full range of retail sales and services and. I think that's clear enough probably uh what's uh being suggested to hear and replacing that would be. Mixed use downtown intended to provide the highest intensity of commercial. Residential and institutional development within the city with uh mixture of uses that optimize public facilities. So um. What all does that include in other words? So we talked about just public streets. Sidewalks and lighting or do we now have to install public restrooms and that type of thing? Uh, there's also stuff uh that we're having to look at that. We're discovering there is reference to outdoor shooting ranges and I don't think we're gonna be uh. Fire in the two seventies or mountain shooting range in middle of town or thirty odd sixes uh. So that could probably be deleted and then. We've got references to uh marijuana establishments as well. But but putting them in is not not uh. Allowed usage um. Do we really need these in Arizona? It's since Article fifteen, section eight, fifteen, ten, which followed a vote on this uh back when. The twenty sixteen or somewhere around in there prohibits marijuana establishments in the city of Montevista. So, you know, we've got a zoning code that's pretty thick right now and it's gonna be a lot thicker when we finish uh. And this is just uh kinda gumshoe tedious work uh. That we're having to go through to figure all this out, uh so that's what we're working on with uh. The zoning code right now. The uh. Today I received from CAG. A uh this all this information right here, which is what they want us to adopt. As a package and it's uh some of the stuff we've already adopted, the IGA and the M forty one. Designation of various of activity. Uh, they never followed up putting anything in there about the um. Uh, how the uh. Towns and how the clerical staff is going to be able to handle. A designation that hits the towns. The way the regulations are written is that we. City Council. Is the permitting, it says the permit for purposes of these regulations. Is hereby established, the members of which shall be the city of Montevista City Council. Uh, and that no person may conduct a designated activity of state interest. Or develop in a designated area of state interest in the city of Montevista. Whether on public or private land without obtaining first a permit or permit amendment under these regulations. I'm just saying this so that you guys will know uh what CAG is advancing here. The uh. The regulations. Uh, the permit authority may authorize consultants to pro. Perform the administrative tasks of the permit administrator required by these regulations. Uh, and the costs of all consultants are the responsibility of the applicant. The uh. So what they're really saying here is that you are going to have to designate. The administrator who's got to figure out then. What um the the fees are going to be uh for the consultant. In all these different areas um. And uh I've sort of mentioned these before, I don't wanna be redundant about that, but. Uh, it's it's really, really extensive. Uh, and it's it's diverse too. It's not just in water, it's in uh traffic studies, it's in uh. Vegetation, weed management, hazard hazardous material management plans. Uh, land use impacts, tax burdens, uh wildlife habitat. Uh, groundwater impact assessment, vicinity maps, environmental assessments, all of that. Uh, the permitting authority, the way that they've written these regulations is responsible for. Establishing and then having hearings on all that. I tried to suggest a very, since they have advanced this to us and sent this to us. And they have studied this and they will, they will make the uh. The procedures, they will send us the result of their findings over there at uh. The Joint Planning Board. Uh, my suggestion was, well, let's just go ahead and designate back to them. That they would be the permitting, that they would be designated as the agents of the permitting authority. And they could go ahead and conduct these hearings. Uh, so I my my suggestion to them was that uh. In addition, the permitting authority may appoint or deputize any person. Attorney or consultants of the planning board who are aligned with the permitting authority's position. As authorized representative of the permitting authority to investigate, determine the effect of an application upon the permitting authority. Adjust the amount of guarantee set forth in section one, three oh two, pay fees to the necessary consultants. Administrative personnel, schedule and conduct hearings. Pursuant to section three, two oh eight, request and pay for transcripts. Draft and implement findings of fact, represent and defend the permitting authority at any appeals, conduct any legal proceedings necessary. To implement the purpose of these rules and regulations, the designation of the ordinance. Passed by the permitting authority or the intergovernmental agreement executed by the permitting authority connection therewith. Um, I think you can kind of visualize if they say, well. Here's our recommendation that you go out and have hearings on all this, you contact all these expert witnesses and hire them and so forth. And they dump this on Nita's desk, how that's how that's gonna hit. So I was trying to uh suggest a way of doing this and maintaining still all the. Administrative structure that they put in here about what's gotta be done and um. How that's gonna be handled. Uh, at this point in time, they just simply sent us this and said, uh, here it is, uh, go enact it. So I don't know where where that's all gonna end up, but I thought I ought to keep you in the loop about all that stuff anyway, so that you'll know. Uh, what they're trying to say to the entities of local government and. I in all these meetings, frankly, I I haven't heard the the county attorney's uh. View of it of Rio Grande County. Uh, because uh she hasn't been at these meetings. Only two municipal attorneys have been at these meetings and really. Uh, taken a look at this, I think, uh myself and Eric over in Alamosa. And we got fifteen municipalities, you know, down here, so uh I think they're just sending this out and saying, you know. Uh, go ahead and enact all this stuff, but I think.
We were talking about the council of governments, right? This came from the.
Yeah, this came from the council of governments, you know.
And and what's their authority?
Uh, their authority is only what they have are advancing frankly. As and 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 I think what they're advancing is a is a good idea of trying to uh. Put in force rules and regulations for under the ten forty one powers that are found in the statute. Of uh. Any type of export of water in San Luis Valley. I think that's a. A commendable thing to do, uh because you gotta go through a lot of hoops here.
But but the things you've talked about, they don't seem to have a lot of it doesn't have anything to do with water.
Um, it's, well, it it. Some of it probably doesn't frankly, and this is what's in the regulations.
Good.
Uh, because when you look at this, uh, my gosh, uh, it's uh, it's it's quite a. It's quite a litany of things, uh, the when you go through all this stuff, how do you evaluate that? Who do you get as experts in this area? And we're responsible for doing that? Uh, so. I don't know how much they are concerned frankly with the municipalities enacting this. Uh, I think there's gonna be the thing of saying, well, the likelihood of you getting hit with this is is pretty low frankly. But we gotta look at it from the standpoint of, well, what if it is dropped on Nita's desk? What happens then? Uh, and uh.
But council has to adopt it first.
Yeah.
To say that they wanna do it.
Yeah.
Right.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we. I'm, well, I'm saying right now is heads up, uh, this is what they're. This is what they're advancing. Gigi was listening to a lot of that the other day on that uh. Presentation too beside myself. It's kind of a continuing course right now and I don't know when they expect all this to. Come to fruition, but. Uh, I what I do expect is that there will be some pressure. On the council to adopt this as quickly as possible and get it all summed up. But you really have to take a look what our obligations are gonna be under this before you do that.
So so how many pages is that document? Hundred?
It's what?
How many pages is that document?
Oh, well, this document is probably, let's see, I'm seeing. Fifty page fifty five pages here and about twenty five pages of that. Are just a litany of all the things that you've got to do. And in every one of those things that you've got to do is subtopics also. So when you try to condense this down. Uh, frankly, I don't know how, I don't know how Alamosa can do it. I don't know how Rio Grande can do it.
So so can we get a copy of that document?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I I don't want a paper copy. Can we get an electronic copy?
Yeah.
But I'd like to read through it.
Okay.
Just in case, it seems like some of it's just government overreach or something like that, something that we have to be aware of.
And I I think, I think it was purposely overreaching just because of the sensitive nature. Of export of water out of the valley.
So you would say this more that more or less is protecting us from the export of of water.
It's right, that that's the effort and that's why that's why we've already approved the IGA and we've already. It's right, that that's the effort and that's why that's why we've already approved the IGA and we've already approved the ordinance.
Okay.
Designating these matters of state interest, but I could see during that process what we were gonna get into from the first. Regulations they proposed when it came to us adopting the rules and regulations that put us, if you sign off on this. You're gonna have the responsibility because they're gonna point it straight at you to solve these problems. Okay? Not happy, no, that's.
Thank you, Gene. City Manager. She's got a big piece of paper tonight.
You know, just a little corner. Been really a busy week, but I can't really tell you what all we've been doing. It's just everyone's just busy. Um I was invited to to do scholarship interviews for the Daniels Fund. And um this was my fourth year in doing it, George also participated. And it's really refreshing to hear these kids and what their dreams and aspirations are and. And so um in my group, we had a young lady from Alamosa, a young man from Sargent. And then a young lady from um Nathrop, she goes to Buna Vista School. And then a gentleman from La Vida and so just sharing that I think our future is in good hands. But it's pretty impressive uh. Competitive scholarship, thirty-six hundred kids, I believe out of four states apply. It's weighted heav- more heavily towards Mon- um Colorado, we get more scholarships, but they had about. Four hundred then that were interviewed and they'll weeded down to about a hundred and ninety-six. So they really look at the comments we make and the scores and even in the scoring, they go from ninety-one to ninety-nine. And you know, it's just kind of a mental thing of, you know, you are already an all-star, you know, when you've made it this far and so it was it was good. Marco mentioned the egg conference and I just wanna do a shout out to the staff, um we had a lot of. Police presence, they they had a good time and then Stephanie and her crew, they were complimented on. We still have issues with a a proper amount of wifi capability out there. So we're working on some more of that and I think Monroe was also gonna go out and talk to Stephanie and help and.
I mean, there's. A ton of, you have a bigger pipe as you want coming in, how you probably distribute inside the cell, I think is the issue.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the issue is, except I think that um. Maybe the BBSI manager and the city had was was trying to, you know, always make sure that. We kept things under a dollar amount and. You know, so we just need to explore and. Do it right, especially with the Crane Festival now coming up, so. Cause you've got the vendors that need access so they can run the credit cards, you've got. People on the phone, you've got all kinds. Um just, we're gonna have to set up a time to go over the employee handbook, I think it's in pretty good shape to to share that with you guys and to take a look at it. Uh because I would assume that you don't wanna air all that out. During a city council meeting, it'll go, I think, pretty quick. But there were some substantial changes that we made and and some of them are in favor of the employee and some of them are. Are just cleanup language that makes it better for for the city and then. Um to make you all aware, in case you're just out running around and you don't have anything to do on Wednesday mornings. The there's a new young man in town named DJ Salazar and you may have seen him in the newspaper, he's a veteran. A younger veteran trying to just get more engagement. It's kind of fun to listen to him because he actually lives in San Luis, but he wants to do all of his activities here in Montevista and so um. And so you can go over to Tri County Senior Citizens every Wednesday morning from eight to ten and have coffee. With the veterans if if you kind of want more of a hands-on meeting and um. And to play off of that, John Glass wants to sell his business. And so he's now more motivated to finish up the Bay Kinkley Veterans Memorial Park. And so we've got a meeting on Monday, if anybody's interested and wants to come participate. Larry Gardner, who has done car shows and things here in the past, wants to help us with the fundraiser and see what we can do to. Bring some more attention back to that and either modify what's been done or, you know, see if we can't raise the money to get it finished. So.
Did you find that list of people who purchased the stones?
He says he has it.
So will that consist of paving the whole walkway or just the?
Just the center.
Just the center. And um there's been some talk that they may they may wanna start trying to seek. You know, are there more people that wanna buy more bricks for their favorite veteran or and put their name on it and recognize family members or or what, but. We're getting moving on that again. I will not be here for our next meeting, which is March the eighth. It'll be fine. Nita will keep it a light agenda. Or I can stack it up with lots of ones.
He won't be here.
All right, we'll go to council committee, city commission and council reports. Mr. Renz.
So I went to the subdistrict meeting for subdistrict six, the Alamosa Heric of Find Off for. Uh they're moving forward on. Reduction and pumping to further sustainability requirement. What they're proposing for this year is a financial based plan, they're gonna spend about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars at. Two hundred and twenty dollars an acre foot to fallow lands this year. Um what that likely means for us in the future, since we're contracting with them, is we'll have to pay higher fees. But I think that's the way we want it to go, otherwise if they do a mandatory curtailment. We have less control over how much we pump, so paying fees is probably the best option for us. As a city. Thank you. Thirty-five hundred acre feet.
Wow. Thank you for that information. That's a lot of acres and I haven't.
Those are small curtailments, it's a sizable, but for what's going around the valley, it's actually. Small. To just to make you aware, it it depends on what the forecast goes, but the given the current forecast. For stream flows and how that will affect the aquifer, if we were gonna hold the offer level and if the forecast holds true. We'd essentially have to follow seventy-five thousand acre feet to hold the offer level this year. If the forecast holds true, hopefully we continue to get snows and that improves.
Mayor Pro Tems the dollar?
I'm gonna.
What's taking? Playing commission is going out.
Counsel Watson?
Nothing I want to hurt, not this time.
All right, well, I got the next two hours. All by myself, I talk to myself a lot anyway.
It's ready, Anthony?
Welcome. But I argue with myself. Back up on the. Egg conference went on, that was amazing and for those that didn't get to attend the Temple Grandin talk, that was really good. Holy cow, there's a lot of people there. They figured there was about six hundred just for the talk. You'll be all right? Outside of that, I all I got to tell you is, man, we need to pray for this country, I've seen what happened in the city. Stay diligent, pay attention to your surroundings. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting until March seventh, six PM. Eric Council Chambers.
I tell you about some of the stuff going on around this world, it's just. Baffling sometimes.